Before we start, I need to read this. The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the Village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the Village of Glendale Heights has determined that in-person meeting for the February 18th, 2021 Village Board and Committee of the Hall meetings is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the Village Board participating in the February 18th, 2021 Village Board meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. This was signed by Linda Jackson, Village President of the Village of Glendale Heights, February 18th, 2021. So now, I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of February 18th, 2021 to order. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
Judge Jackson?
Here. Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Could you all please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off, please?
It would be my pleasure, Mayor. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snowblow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Also, if you have a fire hydrant in your yard or parkway, please help our emergency personnel by shoveling out a three-foot radius around the hydrant. This will help our emergency personnel work quickly in the event of an emergency. The Glendale Heights Police Department wants to hear from you. Please take a moment and fill out their online survey and let them know how they can better serve you. To access the survey, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or visit their Facebook page at The safety of the Glendale Heights residents and community is the number-one priority. If you have any questions, please contact Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is participating with the Northern Illinois Food Bank for a food distribution event this Saturday, February 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Camera Park. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance, and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear face covering and remain in your vehicles. Please drive slow and follow all the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We would like to thank all of the supporting organizations for your help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6070. The next coffee at the Mayor and Village Board will be Saturday, March 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. With the spring season right around the corner, the Village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patios, re-siding of your house, and re-roofing. We would also like to remind you to not pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure if your project requires a permit or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at (630) 260-6030. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
The Police Department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfalls. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojek?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The DuPage County Stormwater Management Planning Committee is now accepting public comment on a draft Phase II addendum to the Winfield Creek watershed plan and a draft Winfield Creek water quality watershed-based plan. There will be a virtual informational meeting on Wednesday, February 24th, at 5:00 p.m. conducted via Zoom. To submit your public comment or for more information, please visit the village website at www.glandalehighs.org. For any questions, please contact DuPage County Stormwater Management at (630) 407-6673. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department, along with numerous other police departments across the county, have set an uptick in people posting messages online and on social media instead of calling 911. These platforms are not monitored 24/7, and in times of an emergency, every second counts. Please remember that the Glendale Heights Police Department cannot take a crime report over social media. So in order to make a report, please contact the non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. If you need immediate assistance, though, and you have an emergency, please remember to call the 911, and don't rely on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Chief, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're welcome.
Nick, come on up here. So some of you might recognize Nick because he actually interned with us, May through July of 2019. So he was around the village for summer, he was here for Summerfest, he was here for all the events at Safety Town. So if you recognize him, that's why. Like to thank, before we get started, our Police Commission is working extra hard again to fill all the vacancies that we have from retirements. Rick Schwardner, our Chairperson, Vic Macias, Police Commission Member, Esther is not here, but Esther Wilk. They've worked tirelessly to get us Nick and the officer we swore in last board meeting, and we have two more officers that have just passed everything that we'll be swearing in, I think, March 1st, not at a board meeting because of our power test and Academy dates. But they're working tirelessly to get us the officers we need to replace the officers that we retired. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the Police Department. Much appreciated. So Nick, Nick is 25 years old, he's a resident at Carroll Stream, I said intern with Glendale Heights Police Department. He's 25, but he's actually done a lot in his first 25 years. He's a four-year member of the Marine Corps, served in the Marine Corps from 2013 to 2017. Went to Western Illinois University, got his degree at Western. He's a certified police officer. We are, I hate to use the word steal, but we're stealing Nick from another police department, which has benefited us. He is here tonight with his mom, Colleen, his dad, Mark, his girlfriend, Aubrey, his Aunt Sally, his Uncle Mike, his cousin Samantha, his brother Brandon, then I cut it off at, like, fourth generations, so. But he's well represented by family, and Nick, if you look behind you, you're well represented by the Police Department members that are here. Some of them have worked with you, and some of them have been hired after you left your internship. So hopefully remember some of them when they take their masks off and you can see their faces.
Yeah.
Nick is going to be badge number 3013, so for the record. Here's Marie.
Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Nicholas Hatler.
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer?
Having been appointed to the office of probationary police officer?
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the County of DuPage-aforesaid?
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, in the County of DuPage-aforesaid?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Say Nick will be badge 3013 because he is already a certified police officer from the Chicago Police Academy. It's one of the first ones we've had from Chicago in a long time. He will be starting work on Monday. So we have all this stuff ready to go, and he's ready to hit the road on Monday, ready to go. If we could just take two or three minutes, Mayor, and get a couple of group pictures, and then we'll make it quick and brief, and then we'll be back.
And welcome. You'll love our Police Department, they're the best. So thank you for being here.
It's always good to have an intern who wants to come back.
We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward.
Mayor, nothing has come in over the email.
Thank you, Mike. Since there is no public discussion, we will move on to the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items two through four. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items two through four. Number two is an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2021-24. Trustee Sullivan?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote. Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Number three is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 2021-14 entitled, "An Ordinance to amend Article B entitled, 'Licensing and Inspection of Multiple Family Dwellings' of Chapter 14 entitled, 'Licensing and Inspection of Properties' of Title 10 entitled, 'Building Regulations of the Municipal Code of the Ordinances of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois,' to correct [inaudible]? Is that what I want to say?
Scrivener's error.
Okay. Errors. First reading has been waived, therefore this would be ordinance number 2021-25. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-25 is approved. Number four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Water Pollution Control Facility Wet Weather Improvements Project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived. This is ordinance number 2021.
We lost you.
What?
Mayor, we lost you.
Your book is on the mute button.
Sorry.
That's okay.
This would be ordinance number 2021-26.
I don't, Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, you called?
Trustee Schroder.
Okay. My God. Okay, so be it.
Mayor?
Yes?
Did you say an ordinance and a waiver of the ordinance? Is that what you're showing?
No, I said first reading was waived.
I said, yes.
What are you missing?
What's the title of the legislation?
You're going to have to do it. Ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Associates Incorporated for the Water Pollution Control Facility Wet Weather Improvements Project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2021-26. Is that okay?
Yes.
Frankly, I thought it was updated, I mean, the substance of it doesn't matter.
Are you speaking to me?
It's exactly the same. I thought more docs had updated it, and it was now a resolution. No change in?
I have a, Don, I have a resolution after the ordinance.
I apologize, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, it's for the same thing.
These are two different projects. Number four and five are two different projects.
I apologize, Mayor.
It's okay.
We once had it as an ordinance, and then, I think it's five, and then we modified to a resolution.
That's correct, Don, it's a resolution, number five.
I apologize, Mayor. Please go ahead.
Okay, is there a motion to?
Mary made the motion.
Mary made the ma-
So moved. Need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-26 is approved. Number five is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a contingent notice of award for the Water Pollution Control Facility Rehabilitation Project. This is Resolution 2021-25. Trustee Pojek?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Trustee Schmidt? Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-R-25 is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward.
Nothing in the email, Mayor.
Nothing in the email either. Therefore, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call vote. Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Meritato, you have Committee of the Hall?
I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting Thursday, February 18th, at 8:05. Can you roll call, Marie?
You want a full roll call?
Full roll call.
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojek?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Okay, we go to public comment. Mike, do we have anything on?
Trustee Meritato, we actually did have something come in off of the board meeting questions, email address. It was from Subhadra Ramachandra. She wanted to congratulate Mayor Jackson for taking time to arrange COVID vaccine at the Sports Hub. It was very well organized, and she's requesting that we arrange more COVID vaccination events so that more seniors can be benefited.
Great.
It was nice.
Very nice. It was nice.
And there is nothing other than that.
Yeah, we did do a good job at that with the COVID.
They did a phenomenal job.
Great job.
Absolute.
We go to committee recommendations.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, do we have any items?
Yeah, I do. Snow removal. I'll tag on with Chester with that.
You got something, Mike?
I'm gonna, same thing that Chester got, so I'll jump in on that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we go to committee recommendations. Number one, Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use in the C3 General Commercial District to allow an outdoor accessory storage building associated with a conditional use for the property located at 215 East North Avenue, at the McDonald's, McDonald Restaurant. Mike?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, or we need roll call.
Roll call.
Discussion.
Yes, it will be roll call. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Are we moving this to the board, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes. I got lost.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
President Jackson? Yes.
Okay, we did have a second from the Mayor.
Correct.
On that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
We already concluded.
We already did, right? You had your hand up, Mike. Was that for, was that for this?
I was, it was for that, yes, but the question I had was a very simple question, that's all, it was nothing too big.
Let's go to a discussion regarding the Northeast DuPage Social. Is that you, Doug?
Yeah, so, thank you, Trustee Meritato. I just wanted to update the board on the yearly service from the grant that we have with Bloomingdale Township Mental Health Board and Northeast DuPage Youth and Family Services. I just received this evening, actually, about 6 o'clock, their contacts for 2020. And as you know, we contracted for the last two years with Northeast DuPage for social services, and we split a grant with Bloomingdale and Glendale Heights. We've upped the grant for 2021 to, from $100,000 to $125,000, which is going to get us, we have a second person working, and we're looking to get a second person that's fully accredited to be on staff, along with our current, I don't want to say it's a full-time social worker, but it's a 30-hour-a-week-ish social worker that we have here in Glendale Heights through the grant. So in 2020, we refer a lot of our domestic, people involved in domestics to social services. A lot of our mental health calls are, you know, go to social services that don't go through a hospital. So in 2020, police officers referred 131 people to our social services. And from that 131 people, on top of all the domestic-related issues that they get called, they call on, and other issues that they call on, they had 683 community contacts, they signed up 42 clients for services, and from those-
They signed up 42 clients for services. And from those 42 clients and families, they conducted 255 private one-on-one counseling sessions. So I just wanted to, you know, show to the board that we're getting a lot of value from our social services being here. Just last week, we had a, our social services was here, and we had a, a lady in talking to us about something that, that, that was going on, talking police officers, and was kind of breaking down, and we were able to bring her right to social services, and they actually had a counseling session with her, um, right there in the middle of the police department. So, uh, tax dollars are going for a really good service for this grant, and I just wanted to present to the public and to the board, um, the benefit of the grant and the social services that we're providing here in the village. Thank you.
Chief, could you just mention where that grant comes from?
Yeah, so the grant is from the Bloomingdale Township Mental Health Auxiliary Board that was formed about three years ago. Uh, we're one of the recipients, you know, one of many recipients through that grant.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions, Mayor?
Doug, after the 683 community contacts, I missed the next...
So 42, 42 families have been, um, signed up for family counseling, you know, or individual counseling. They provided 255 private one-on-one sessions.
That, I've got that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're moving on. Chester, snow removal.
Yeah, I just want to, kudos to the guys that drive in the snow trucks. They did an excellent, excellent job. I just, it amazed me how fast the streets were being cleared. Uh, al, also, the special, they came back on the corners, and they made sure all the corners, you, you could come to a corner, you can see if any cars were coming. They really did a fantastic job, especially on the corners. So that's all I got to say. They did a good job. Let them know that they did A1 job. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I'll piggyback off of that, toughly. They did a wonderful job. But I just want to recognize quite a few of the residents that I saw did an exceptional job with clearing sidewalks, not throwing the snow out into the street. I mean, I was impressed that the, you know, kids aren't in school, if, kind of, sort of, but you were able to get down the sidewalks, and I was real pleased with all the residents that I had seen, that I drove around and looked, because it's, it's, it was hard to get around. I know I made a pass with a broken snow blower to make sure I got mine done and the neighbors done, but I wanted to say thanks to all the residents for everything they did. That's all.
Great. Anybody else?
You know. I agree with...
Okay.
But they said, great job. It's been cold.
Yeah.
And great job to the police department, because they've got to be cold out there, too.
They're dressed for it. But thank you.
Okay, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I didn't even see you up there, Sharon. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, roll call?
Hi.
Roll call.
Roll call, Marie?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.